Simulation, just a quick sketch of a photograph that shows you're looking towards Brownsville on 48 and you can see there's a drainage area and state right-of-way, basically where the power lines are, that's the edge of state right-of-way. So we're just out of state right-of-way in port property and you can see the person is there next to the sign. That's why the scale is the way it is, you know, fairly large. When we presented this to the port, we got very good feedback from the port commissioners. Mr. Camperano said, you know, please take this to the city, show it to the city. If the city is generally in agreement, then we'd like to work a partnership, whether that comes in the form of an MOU or, you know, we'll have to work that out with city staff and city attorney on how we work that. But their suggestion was that they have a lot of the crews and people at the port that could actually construct this. And so they were saying, well, you know, get us the final design once it's been approved by the commission and we will cost it out and if the city wants to, you know, they'll split it 50/50 with us. So, and we're pretty comfortable that will fit within our budget. We have about 30,000, we have 30,000 set aside for this project. We've had for more than a year now set aside for this and we're quite comfortable, especially if they build it, that this will come in 60,000 or less. So we just generally like your feedback on this and if we're going in the right direction, we'll continue pursuing the partnership with the port.
Okay Scott, I'll look to my right first and see if any of the commissioners have any remarks or comments. I appreciate that.
Oh yes, so we charge our CVB with branding and marketing Brownsville to have one consistent message and I don't believe they use that slogan anymore, "On the Border by the Sea." So I'm just curious if it's possible to maybe collaborate with them to make sure that we have a consistent message in our magazines and our signs and our billboards and now this welcome sign.
Absolutely, yeah, that's one of the reasons that we're here today, to make sure we're all on the same page. And we do know the new logo did come into play during this process and so we're sure to get that on there, but we hadn't heard about the "On the Border by the Sea" being but certainly we can adjust it accordingly to the, it's the BCV B is, or sorry?
Yes.
Okay, sure, sure, we can meet with them.
And I just wonder too, I think the city still uses that slogan.
That's our choice.
So that's why we placed that slogan on there.
Visitors of the Convention Bureau is using "With a History as Big as Texas,"
Right.
But the city hasn't officially changed from "On the Border by the Sea."
I wonder why that's not reflected there.
Because we haven't done it.
And then the CVB, I believe they changed it again because I'm on their website and now it says "A Fiesta Every Day." So it seems that we keep changing our brand, our marketing message when I really believe we should just have one consistent message to market the city.
Charlie, I think it's a point well taken and I think you need to kind of take a look at it because I think most messaging people understand that and say, "One consistent message."
This has always been our logo. We never changed our logo. So I think our message to the Visitors of the Convention Bureau would be, go back to our logo.
Okay, well Bean's back there, go on to Bean him one. I'm just kidding.
Oh, it's, it's, it's fine.
Okay, anyone else?
He's, he's.
Yeah, no, I know, he's fine.
Well, I was gonna say something because Miss Samora brought something.
Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. Kabler's absolutely correct. Our board of directors took it upon themselves to change the logo with "A History as Big as Texas" and we're also looking into, like Commissioner Samora said, Brownsville, "A Fiesta Every Day" because what we're trying to do is promote our festivals and what have you. But if you all want to make it just one logo, we will do it.
Well, here's what I'd like for you guys to do is all you guys get together.
Yeah.
Not so much the, well, the Beautification Committee and the staff of the city get together, talk about it, give us some memorandum of, you know, what your intake, you know, what your input and what your, you know, suggestions are and email them to all the, to Estella and Estella can distribute them to all the commissioners so that everybody gets a chance to take. This is a workshop, so this is a perfect opportunity to kind of figure out what we can all do together, okay?
Sure.
Anybody else on this side?
I just have a question. How does the lease agreement, is that going to be leased out to the city since the property belongs to the port? How's that gonna work out?
Those are some of the details that are still to be worked out, but Mr. Camperano said, you know, they're ready, willing and able to start working with us once we had your blessing to kind of move forward. We didn't want to go that next step until everyone had seen it, is comfortable with it, you know, try to take this in the process.
This is a great process. Anybody on the left-hand side here? Let me just tell you, I have met with the port about this issue and other issues and we have a very good relationship, so I'm looking forward to this. I would also encourage the Beautification Committee to explore the idea and I realize we're in tight, you know, fiscal times, but the airport is also, in other words, that's why I think Melissa's idea is very well taken, is that we need to kind of be consistent with that messaging, but with the fact that I don't Mexico is coming in here now on a Wednesday. I believe that if we take this opportunity and seize this moment, we can make that a permanent, I mean, not only will they be here for a year, they're looking at trying to expand their service and so we should take this time to go ahead and collaborate and work well with all the ports of entries, okay?
Great.
So anyway, just a thought.
It's the, these welcome signs have been kind of on our agenda since almost the beginning. So I mean, we would love to do like one a year or one every two years, it just, the process, it does, it's a painstaking process. I mean, we tried to do one up by San Benito was our original place, coming in on 77 and just the conflicts between TechDOT and the railroad and, you know, safety issues, that's why we ended up putting it there.
Well, when you all get to that point, if you all are taking a look at the airport, I mean, there has, there was an original, Larry Brown just walked in, there was an original project, it lacked funding from the TechDOT aspect of it and we're right now in contact with the TechDOT people so that we can probably all get together.
Rekindle that.
And I think I went to your office to see what you're gonna do for free. How about that?
Sure, sure. We're vested in Brownsville.
No, no, I know you are, I know you are. Otherwise I wouldn't have gone to your office.
Sure, sure.
No, I just think it would be nice to, that whole entryway from the airport, when we talk about advertising, there's no better advertising than to do, you know, really showcase Brownsville. And then we've talked to the National Parks fellow today, Mark, and again, I think we have a golden opportunity. Not many have national state parks, you know, inside the city limits and we happen to be one of those fortunate ones. So we need to kind of hype up what we've got. Palo Alto is a definite asset that we need to really show and beautify.
Yeah, sure.
Okay?
Great, great, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, thank you. We'll continue to pursue the partnership and the logos.
You can tell them that we're very much in favor of working things out and getting it done.
If we're talking about a monument sign at the airport, Mayor, we are, we've got the funding and we're just about ready to present that.
Yeah, I think the project that Larry had told me about, and I'm still setting it up with TechDOT, was that they were the ones that failed to have any funding and so, but we'll work it out. They're doing a great job out there at the airport and bringing all these airline services, so we need to kind of give them a boost, okay?
We got funding a place with a monument sign from Gibik.
All right, thank you.
That's in the port.
Thank you, thank you.
The next item, Estella.
Workshop Item B, Gladys Porter Zoo Update Report.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I thought it would be appropriate, particularly with so many new commissioners, to just do a brief update on what's going on at your Gladys Porter Zoo and I would point out the fact that the city of Brownsville owns the zoo grounds and all the facilities. It is a city facility. This year, we celebrate our 40th anniversary and this year Zufari will be celebrating that anniversary and as you know, most of you know, that's our big annual fundraiser and the revenues generated at Zufari are used for our capital projects, new construction, et cetera, at least in years when we don't have to use it for operating. But benefit of a zoo and a community, our zoo is basically a living classroom for 390,000-plus visitors. It's a major tourist attraction. It provides constructive recreation for local families. It's a great place to take the family and have a day out. It's a quality of life facility. It's a habitat for migratory birds and as more brush around the area is eliminated, we see more and more wild and native bird species on the zoo grounds. As a matter of fact, we're an ecotourism site on the Texas Birding Trail and during migration spring and fall, we get a lot of bird watcher tourists that actually come to the zoo because it is a site on the birding trail. Our annual budget right now varies between 3.85, $385,000 to $4 million depending on the year. We spend over $2 million in local salaries, we employ 120 people and we make nearly a million dollars in local purchases every year just for our operations. Tourism in Texas, travel and tourism is one of the most important export-oriented industries and the reason we say export-oriented is because we're providing product and services for people outside of our area. And the GDP of the Texas travel industry was 23.4 billion in 2010. In Texas, only oil and gas production and its related manufacturing has a significantly higher GDP than tourism. Tourism has a great return on investment. For every $1 the state spends, and you can just use the same concept for the city, there's a $7 return and that's a pretty good investment, seven to one for every dollar you spend on marketing tourism for your area. Tourism in Brownsville, according to economic impact, and this is from the Governor's Report 2010, travel on Texas report, direct travel spending for 2010 in Brownsville was 215 million, 215.6 million, which was down slightly from 2008 when 227.1 million was spent, but that's a direct reflection of economics nationally. And one of the things that's very important at the state level, the state of Texas did not lower their travel promotion budget, not one penny, because they looked at that seven to one return on your investment and they said, "This is not the time to start losing money from our tourism industry." Colorado did that very thing a couple of years back. They were number one in tourism and now they're 17th and they've never recovered their number one position and they probably won't. Who attends our zoo? Well, look at this number, this is kind of interesting. In 2008, we had 360,000 visitors. In 2010, we had 435,149 and we're having very good attendance so far this year, knock on wood and hope the storms stay away, but we're on track to a very good attendance year again in 2011. But look at the change in demographics as who's coming to the zoo. In 2010, 81% of the visitors were from the Rio Grande Valley and of these, 160,000, 169 were Brownsville residents. 19% or 80,754 came from outside of the valley and you can see that in 2008, 42% or 151,200 came from outside of the valley. Again, a direct reflection of tourism patterns due to high gas costs and people taking shorter trips, not taking the trip from Brownsville to Disneyland or from McAllen to Disneyland, they're coming to Brownsville instead. So we're seeing a lot more local tourism than we did a year or two ago. If you read the bottom, it says, "Following steep declines in 2009, both state and national travel industries began to recover in 2010." And there it is, we had an increase over 2008. Despite state and national declines in travel, the zoo continues to garner increased attendance. And it's like trying to hit the moving target. We have to constantly look and try and figure out where our market is and where it's coming from and where to best invest those promotional and advertising dollars. Just kind of an update on capital improvement projects at the zoo. Under construction, hopefully very shortly, will be the 9,717 square foot education complex. This will represent a 385% increase in education space and the reason that's needed is we cannot accommodate all the classes that request special classes at the zoo. Last year, 2010, we did actual classes for 44,000 students. Now, that's not just people that walk through the gate, those are people that actually got some sort of formal classroom experience on wildlife, conservation, ecology, nature, et cetera, et cetera. So we really need those increased classrooms. We already have the largest natural history library in terms of books held of any facility here in South Texas and that includes both universities. We have a bigger natural history library than either university and we'll continue to expand that and that's available to university students, elementary school students and anyone that wants to come over and use the library. It's always open during working hours, all you have to do is come in and ask and you're welcome to use the natural history books we have in the library. That building, as you can see, will have a Spanish-style, Spanish colonial-style entryway. That's a 151-foot shaded porch which will view out into the park, the Botanical Butterfly Park that we've just completed. We've got a good percentage of the money in hand and we're actively fundraising on that project. Here you can see the superstructure's already going up on the Russell Aquatic Ecology Center. This new exhibit will have a stingray touching and feeding activity, jellyfish displays, large fresh and saltwater fishes, a jetties exhibit, mouth of the boat of the Rio Grande, a mangrove display. A teacher will be able to take a class in there and use each element in the exhibit as a teaching tool. This is what you find in saltwater, this is what occurs in freshwater, this is what occurs in brackish water. So it'll be a very great teaching tool and hopefully we'll jump our attendance by maybe As you can see, we've got part of the money in hand, construction's well underway and it's always easier to raise money when you have a tangible result for people to look at and say, "We want to be part of this." So that's what we do, that's what we spend most of our time at, trying to raise money for these improvements. And most of all, I want to thank everyone here, the city of Brownsville, for your continuing support of the Gladys Porter Zoo. We're proud of it. We want it to be and continue to be one of the top zoos in the world, not just in Brownsville, Texas, and thank you for your continuing support. And anyone that has questions, I'm generally there if I'm not in South Dakota on my motorcycle, 24/7, so.
Well, Pat, let me just express to you my own personal thank you for all your hard work. As you well know, I visit you quite often. I'm very much interested in your projects and I'll also welcome any other commissioners to make any comments to Dr. Birchfield, but I do think you're doing a marvelous job and we will continue to support you and I think the city of Brownsville really appreciates what you're doing for them.
Well, again, I'm very blessed by having an absolutely outstanding staff. They all wear four or five hats and they all work extremely hard and it's evident.
It is.
They do a great job and thanks so much.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll now go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the test of straw. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the city we're blessed to live in here in Brownsville. Lord, we thank you for the teachers we've been blessed with and Lord, we ask you to bless and guide them this week as they're already preparing to teach our children. Bless the children and the parents as they prepare to go back to school. Lead and guide each of them and Lord, I ask you to lead and guide each of our leaders here before us today. Let the decisions that are made in this meeting be good for the city of Brownsville in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Estella, as part of the mayor's report, I'd like to just make some comments. Some of you are here from the Public Works section of our city. As we prepare for tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask our Brownsville residents to keep the family of Mr. Hector Salasar in their thoughts and prayers. Mr. Salasar passed away last Thursday after nearly 18 years with the city of Brownsville. Mr. Salasar worked for the Sidewalk Construction Division of our Public Works Department and his craftsmanship will be enjoyed by thousands of local residents and visitors for many years to come. Mr. Salasar will be missed by his coworkers and his supervisors and we ask that you keep his family in your prayers. The other announcement I have to make is, and I noticed Mr. Patricio Sampaio is here and I appreciate your being here. As some of you might know, the Brownsville Housing Authority is a, has a board of local residents. Over the last two or three weeks, I received a resignation from one of the board members and this one is not done by the majority of the commissioners, it's done by the mayor and I don't know all the reasons for it, but that's what the bylaws require. And so I just wanted to announce that Patricio Sampaio has now been appointed to the Brownsville Board and I thank you for your acceptance of that position. With that, I, that will be the entire mayor's report. Commissioners' report?
Thank you. I want to take a minute to thank the mayor as well as Commissioners Zamora and Commissioner Villarreal for joining me with Art Rodriguez from the Health Department to welcome a very distinguished guest to the Valley. Dr. Elizondo is the Regional Director of Region Six for the HERSA, which is Health and Human Services for the Nation. He is originally, was originally from West Laco and from a family of migrant workers and went on to become a rear admiral in the Public Health Service and he was very engaged in our description of the work that we're doing in Brownsville collaboratively between UTB, the School of Public Health, and the Health Department and the Parks Department with respect to improving the wellness of our community. It made a big impression on him that all three commissioners, three of our commissioners as well as our mayor took an interest in meeting him and he pledged to come back and participate with us. He also pointed out to us very much so that the Public Health Service is a wonderful opportunity for our youth and even the older people in our community to consider a training and education in the health field, whether it be x-ray technology or medical assistant or nursing or medicine. The Public Health Service is a wonderful choice to be able to pay for an education that you may not be able to afford on your own and then give back some of your time to areas that are in need such as the Lower Rio Grande Valley. So I would encourage everyone out there, if you are thinking about a career somewhat in the health education or health-related area, you can contact me or you can contact Mr. Rodriguez in the Health Department and we will give you the information that you need to be able to get in touch with the Public Health Service. It is very hot outside and I would still encourage everyone to find cooler times of the day to get out and be active. One example is the historic Battlefield Trail, our nine-mile paved walking and bike trail. And over the past few years, the city has gone to great effort to complete various safety upgrades, including the lighting, including mobile security patrols that are on a regular basis, signage and brush trimming that has only just begun. This is a picture on the screen of the security car that patrols, or vehicle, I guess, that patrols the bike trail, bike hike trail and it's a great place to come out and have some fun with your family. We are also working finally on some other extensions of the historic bike trail that we're not yet ready to discuss, but there will be extensions in different directions from the bike trail that we're very excited about.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next will be number three presentations, the BISD Youth Project and the Brownsville Food Bank, and that's Commissioners Melissa Zamora and John Villarreal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've invited Mrs. Clow and Mr. Parks. They have a great project that they're working on together. Mrs. Clow represents BISD with the BISD Youth Project and Mr. Parks with the Brownsville Food Bank, which is separate from the RGV Food Bank.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share our, a little bit of our program information and then Mr. Parks is gonna share with what he's doing with the Brownsville Food Bank. I just kind of want to go over the definition first so you can see what type of children our program services through our district and who qualifies a child in regards to the label of becoming homeless and/or in a homeless, a temporary situation. There are children and youth who are temporarily sharing the houses with another family due to economic hardship, a fire, there's different situations, it could be domestic violence. There's many situations in regards to why a family has to share the housing with one We also have some of our families having to live in our motels in our city, Motel Six, Executive Inn, Boca Chica Suites, Plaza Square. All these children living in these temporary situations qualify as being homeless. We also have children who are living in places that are not suitable for human habitat, whether they don't have running water, electricity, or their homes are dilapidated and not suitable for human habitat. We also have children living, sometimes having to resort into their own vehicles. Today I had a family that came in and shared that information with me. Of course, we make referrals to all our different community agencies to try to see how we can best assist them. And we also have children who are migrants who may qualify as being homeless, not because they're migrants, but they're living in one of those situations mentioned above.
Can you tell us more or less how many fall into that category at the BISD?
Yes, sir. For our school year of 2010-2011, which just passed, we serviced over 1,000 children.
Over 1,000 children that are, that fall in the classification of homeless, right?
Yes, sir. Not at risk, but as homeless. Yes, sir. And then of course, you know, the children who are in our shelters like Ozenam and Friendship of Women. We also have children who are unaccompanied, are youth, and there's many reasons that they are unaccompanied. It may be that their parents have been deported, incarcerated, simply abandoned and/or choose to leave their household for whatever reason. That may have, it may be abuse of some sort. And with that, I mean, what we do is within our offices, we provide direct services through our school district, enroll them in school, coordinate services with all our departments depending on each family's and child's needs and of course, and one of the main things is, and this is how Mr. Kenneth Parks, the director for Brownsville Food Bank, has come together on this project. Based on a presentation that I gave, he saw the need that we needed a food bank here in Brownsville. And with that, we've worked together and we have an ongoing project. And now I can introduce Mr. Kenneth Parks with his part of the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Zamora, for inviting us here today. Diana Clow was originally invited to visit the, I am also the president of the Brownsville Ministerial Association and Ms. Clow was invited to bring awareness to the Ministerial Association about what we call the, what, according to this law, which is the homeless youth and children of our city. I've been to many countries and I didn't understand, I've seen homelessness different than what I see in our city and the awareness that she brought, brought me up to speed. So I've been studying prior to her coming to our Ministerial Association about cities that are in poverty level that are, were supplying snack pack bags to the students in the schools and different areas throughout the United States and started doing some research into that and got together with some concerted efforts with some local churches and we started doing snack pack bags within our city. And the Food Bank of Brownsville is really, the concerted efforts are specifically mostly for the snack pack bag program. We're focusing just on those items. As you can see, there's a list here of items which As you can see, there's a list here of items which, which constitute a snack pack bag. I'll explain the plastic later. But, don't shoot me. But, so we, so, but I wanted to bring this so you can have an understanding of what a snack pack bag is. It has a Chef Boyardee meal, has some cereal, some crackers, cheese crackers, has applesauce, fruit, it has caprese, caprese un jus. There's about fifteen items that make up a snack pack bag, okay? So what we've been doing is we have, you see what, we're also working with UTB, starting in September, we're going to have five locations in UTB for donations where the, where the, where the college students can kind of police theirself with this program. If we could go to the next slide. Since we met, since we met in around February of this year, we have supplied between Feed the Children and Ministerial Donations, over a thousand, close to a thousand snack pack bags. If we put August numbers in there, which are probably over five hundred, we're looking roughly around fifteen hundred. Now, these bags are presented through the BISD Youth Connection Project on an as-need basis. We don't have like a certain time and say, okay, every Tuesday at two o'clock, we do this. It's as people come in and they have a need, then we do the best to support that need. So as you can see, the numbers vary, but even through the summer months, you know, there's a need there. One thing I've seen about the snack back pack programs in the other cities, as we know in the schools, we're seeing, we're seeing meals provided for breakfast, and we're seeing meals provided for lunch within our school system. But then we see children that are going home, and they have nothing that they're going home to. We're talking about children that are living in hotels and motels, substandard housing. If you go to the next page. These are some of the concerted efforts we currently have. We currently have around twenty locations within the city of Brownsville, and we're looking around thirty-seven locations once we get into September, and our, our goal is fifty locations by the end of the year. What we find is, as we are generous people within our city and within our resources, a lot of times we'll focus on the needs for Thanksgiving, we'll focus on the needs for Christmas, but we have hunger situations twenty-four seven within our city. And how do we meet, as a concerted effort, how do we meet that? Could you go to the next slide, please? We also had some businesses that are, that are concerted efforts. As a matter of fact, Durobag, we switched from plastic to paper, Durobag, which is one of our great companies here in the, at the Port of Brownsville, has been donating as many as five hundred bags at a time. So we, we turn around and we meet city ordinance with the paper. But another thing this does is, we don't want to hand this to a child, okay? Because we don't want to embarrass that child, we don't want that child to be bullied because they have a need. So we're, we're protecting our children, that somebody's not going to go up and say, oh, look, you know, you need food. Another company that has, another company that has supplied some material for us is Home Depot. Home Depot has, the one on Highway Forty-Eight, has supplied fifty carts, shopping carts. So we had, and we also have signs donated to us that, that are hooked up on the carts. And to our churches and concerted efforts, we're doing a thing called First Fruit Sunday, where people are bringing donations in on the first Sunday of every month. But we have some locations, hey, I got stuff, we're doing it every week. And it's, it's really great that that's happening. So there's different, we've had shelving that's been brought down here by local transportation companies, we've had shelving, and we have spent zero dollars in what we're doing. I have my own business, been doing business in this area for twenty years. Like yourselves, I'm doing this as a public servant to our city. If you go to the next slide, you can see these are tentative, this is seventeen tentative drop-off locations that we're going to have up onboard by September. UTB is, we're already working in that area to reach, reach the needs of the students in our universities. We don't want our children to sit down and, our students, and try to be studying for a test, and they're wondering where their next snack is coming from, they have to get up and go to a local dollar menu place and get something, and then come back and be interrupting their studies. As you can see, we're trying to work with some different businesses. If you go to the next slide. This is what constitutes a snack pack bag. We try to be very specific on the items that we're giving. We're not asking for a can of Hominy that's been in the pantry for three years. We want people to go out and actually purchase items and bring items in for donations. We had a situation the other day where I thought, well, maybe we needed some, Diana called me, she said, could we have some, we need some Vienna sausage, and we need some juice. And I thought, at first I thought, well, I'll just go buy it. And I just checked up on myself, and I called a church, and I said, I said, y'all collect anything this week? And they said, yeah, we got a few items, why don't you come buy? And I went by, and here in the cart, there were several cans of Vienna sausage in the cart. We had eight snack pack bags we had to deliver to a motel where some kids were staying. And then as I was ready to leave, I, she said, wait, wait, wait. She says, I got some juice for you, too. And she went in the refrigerator, she said, I don't know who this belongs to, but I'm going to give it to you. And what, you know, it goes to show me that we have the resources within our community. You know, we're not asking, we're not here asking for monetary donations, but if you want to do that, that's fine. We're looking for community involvement and community awareness. If you go to the next slide, this, this is what does constitute a snack pack bag. These bags are actually under four dollars, which if, where most of these kids are in motels and their place, if they go to the Valero, they're going to pay about twelve dollars for these same items off the shelf. And that's all I have. But we're reaching some kids that, if, I, I hear stories in the schools, I hear stories in the universities where they just don't have anything. And so this is not a, this is not a, this is not a handout, it's a helping hand, and it's just to subsidize, it's not to take over any programs, it's just to subsidize some things we can do in the community.
Well, I want, I want to thank Commissioners Zamora and Villarreal for having you come before us, and I do want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the city of Brownsville, for all you do for our kiddos. And there's nothing wrong with a brown bag. We all brown bagged it at one time, right, Senator? And we had many Vienna sausages. So, anyway, we've all been through those times, and we all acknowledge what we've been, and Commissioners, would anybody like to make a comment?
I have a couple of questions. The, I think you're wonderful for what you're doing. It seems to me, and I, and I can't remember the exact reference, I read about a gentleman in, I want to say it's Ohio, and he was a retired gentleman who, who noticed the need of the hungry children in his area and such. And, and he had a project, and I believe he even founded a foundation, I need to look it up, but the, the school that was left, the food that was left over at school every day from, from the lunches and the breakfast, the non-perishable things, like the fresh fruit, and that sort of thing. And they bought backpacks for the kids, and they sent full backpacks home with children on certain days from the food that was left over at the school district. I wondered if you had ever looked in, into that.
We are, I'm, I'm looking into it, it's just taking some time. We're still trying to get the, the non-perishable. We just started on the First Fruit Sunday on, in June. So we're trying to get that rolling a little bit more, but that is a consideration of, but, you know, there's health laws, is that food, you know, temperatures of the food. One of our main concerns is the, is public safety, and whatever we're serving, we don't want someone getting sick, or E. coli, or some situation. If certain things aren't kept at certain temperatures, just like our non-perishable items, they have to be kept at a certain temperature. I think it's fifty-four to seventy degrees Fahrenheit, or else it lose, it degregates over time. So we've, we got to be, when we look into that, I agree with you one hundred percent, but we have to research, because the main thing we're concerned about is the health of our, of our community and the health, the health of our children.
I would encourage you to look, I think it was Ohio, and I'll look for it as well, because there must be a precedent that these folks did that.
Right, thank you very much.
The other question I had was about, there, there are four, if I'm not mistaken, community gardens in BISD schools in the city. I know Mr. Salinas, I believe, is the gentleman that does the farming. And, and, and these, I believe the gardens are tended by kids that are at risk for, you know, certain problems. What, what happens to the food, you know, the vegetables and the fruits that are grown in those gardens? Is that something that you might be able to plug in to your packs?
Number one, we don't have facilities right now for perishable items. That's, that's one issue, that we can't, we don't have a place to store. But we, I know in the city, there's like the Good Neighbor Settlement House has some gardens that Home Depot helped them with. I know that recently the Ozenon Center has started some, I think that's the right pronunciation, has started some gardens for some organic growing and vegetables and stuff like that. We're, we're, right now, we're just trying to focus on the non-perishable items to get it rolling better than it is. It's doing well, but we're just trying to, trying to focus on that.
Well, you're a wonderful example to the rest of us to get involved in our communities and do the best we can for all of our citizens, so thank you very much.
Yeah, we're just looking for the concerted efforts. Thank you.
Us teachers, we're back at in-service this weekend. We had, especially at the school that I teach at, El Loeveda Middle School, we had an in-service where we will be tolerating, we will have a zero tolerance policy in state for bullying. So when you said that, you know, somebody might be at risk that we're bullying, we're not just going to be, we're not just going to be saying, you know what, we have, we're a campus that has zero, no, we're actually going to be enforcing. Staff has been told that we will be out enforcing within campus all kinds of bullying, and we were explained about seven or eight different kinds of bullying that we need to be looking out for specifically every day. Now, we also came upon the agreement that we need to return back to giving our students a lot of more citizenship and a lot more involvement within their communities, so that they can be aware that these problems do exist. And we, like you said, need to be the first, you know, that first person that comes to the aid of our fellow men. So thank you once again to the Commissioners and for you for coming to present this. And like I said, you know, BISD, like I told you, is working towards maintaining, you know, that kind of a policy on, on bullying.
May I mention that the, the UTB has taken this program up as a, as a civic project for community service, which I think is wonderful, and also part of their Health Services Department. So the students are going to be involved, like I said, they're going to pretty much police themselves, which I think is great.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks again. Stella, I think the next one is the Proclamations, and there's three officers, there's three proclamations.
Yes, there's Commander, Commander Robert Avitia.
Yeah, excuse me. Commissioner Longoria has requested that he could read the proclamation for, for Bobby. And Senator Eddie Lucio, thank you for being here. I think, Charlie, why don't you go ahead and take over on this item, okay? I think the way we'll go is Commander Avitia, welcome. If, Commissioner, would you read the proclamation?
Well, you've had a city pro, right? Have a senior pro. Not just this. Yes, please. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to, Mayor, if it's okay, you know, by standard protocol, Senator, if you'd like, please take the floor and...
Do you have a city proclamation also?
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you. Is Liz and your family here?
Yeah.
Could you all please join us also?
Sure, just taking a picture.
Yeah, we got to build her. Thank you, brother. Mayor, I'm happy to be able to call all three of the retirees, my friends. And to Tony and to Ray, thank you for your service, thank you for everything that you've done for this community also. Thank you, my brothers. Thank you so much.
No, no, to Bob, to, to Robert.
You know, Bob, when I came into office in two thousand and three, you know, you came in and you were one of the first friends, you and Carlos were some of the first friends that I made here. And Liz, thank you for everything you've always done, and thank you for always being so supportive of Bob and everything that he's always, that he always did for the city. And to your family, thank you, guys. Thank you so much for always being supportive of your dad and everything that he's done for us. So thank you for that. The following is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas honoring Commander Roberto Ramiro Avitia Junior for thirty-six years of dedicated service. And whereas Commander Robert Ramiro Avitia Junior is a native of Harlingen, Texas, born on October twenty-third in nineteen fifty-three, graduated from Brownsville High School in nineteen seventy-one, received his BS in Criminal Justice from Pan American University in nineteen seventy-four, and joined the Brownsville Police Department in January first, nineteen seventy-four. And whereas while in service with the Brownsville Police Department, Commander Roberto Ramiro Avitia Junior completed numerous assignments, including police patrolman, investigator, supervisor of juvenile services, public information officer, administrative services division, and the emergency communication center. And whereas Commander Robert Avitia Junior was promoted to the rank of sergeant in nineteen eighty-three, and in that capacity served as a supervisor of the patrol division, detective division, property and evidence section, building maintenance, records division, fleet management, fiscal management, and in two thousand and three was assigned to the Office of Community Affairs, SOTMOS Community Network Center. And whereas in two thousand and four, Roberto Ramiro Avitia Junior was appointed to the rank of police commander, and up to the present time was assigned to the Professional Standards Command. And whereas throughout the years, Commander Robert Avitia Junior has received many commendations for his quality of work with the Brownsville Police Department, earning the department's Employee Recognition Award on numerous occasions. And whereas Commander Roberto Ramiro Avitia Junior honorably retired on July twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby honor Commander Roberto Ramiro Avitia Junior for his thirty-six years of dedicated service to the Brownsville Police Department and to the city of Brownsville. And this is done on the sixteenth day of August. Signed, Antonio Tony Martinez, Mayor and the City Commission. Congratulations, Ron.
Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Commander Robert R. Avitia for his many years of outstanding service with the Brownsville Police Department. And whereas highly respected by his colleagues, Commander Avitia is well-known for his dedication to his profession and for his superior courage and leadership. Whereas Commander Avitia began his career with the Brownsville Police Department in nineteen seventy-five, and he has since served in nearly every capacity within the department, from a patrolman in the patrol division to an investigator in the criminal investigation division. Whereas he has served as supervisor of juvenile services in the juvenile section of the detective division. As the department's public information officer, he has also served in the administrative services division and in, in the emergency communication center. Whereas he was promoted to sergeant nineteen eighty-three and took on the duties as a shift supervisor. In two thousand and three, he was assigned to the Office of Community Affairs, SOTMOS Community Network Center. And in two thousand and four, he was appointed to the position of police commander and assigned to the Professional Standards Command, where he has served since then. And whereas throughout his exceptional career, Commander Avitia has manifested uncommon talent in managing the far-reaching responsibilities of a police officer, and he is admired by citizens throughout the community for his high standards in professionalism. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of the State of Texas, Eighty-Second Legislature First Call Session hereby commend Commander Robert R. Avitia on his exceptional career with the Brownsville Police Department, and extend to him best wishes for the retirement years ahead. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be prepared for him as an expression of high esteem, respect from the Texas Senate. It's signed with me by the President of the Senate, the Honorable David DuHurst. With this resolution, which will be in the Texas Archives forever, so your grandchildren can read about you in the years to come, I want to present to you, Commander, a, a Texas flag, very specially flown over the state Capitol, dedicated July the fourth of this, of this year. Very important year in our, day in our, in our... Very important year in our, day in our, in our...
Congratulations.
You know, it gets to be the day when you can, I know him as Bobby. And this is the wonderful part about being in a smaller community, and, and, and all of the people are great friends. Bobby, do you want to say a word or two?
It's been a great pleasure, privilege, and honor to serve this blessed community. And I think our Christian faith and our Christian love has carried many people past these problems that we had. I see that in your faces here, and I know we're moving forward, and we're gonna do greater things for Brownsville. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, I'm gonna turn it over. Are you gonna read the next proclamation, or how? Estella? Okay. This one is for Mike Tocayo. Is this for Tony?
Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres.
Right.
Tony?
Well, he's got, he's got friends coming.
This is a proclamation of the City of Brownsville, Texas honoring Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres Jr. for more than 29 years of dedicated service. Whereas Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres Jr. is a native son of Brownsville, Texas, born October the 12th, 1960, graduated from James Pace High School in 1979, and began his career as a police officer on August the 3rd, 1981. And whereas Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres Jr. obtained many certifications from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, Officer Standards, and Education during his career with the Brownsville Police Department, including basic peace officer certificate in July 1st of 1982, advanced peace officer certificate on July of 1983, and master peace officer certificate on March 26th of 2002. And whereas Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres Jr. served the Brownsville Police Department for more than 29 years, fulfilling assignments to the Uniformed Services Command and as motorcycle officer with the Traffic Enforcement Unit. And whereas Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres Jr. retired on May 31st, 2011, as a patrol officer with the Uniformed Services Command. Now therefore, we the members of the Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens do hereby honor Officer Antonio Alfonso Torres Jr. for more than 29 years of service to the Brownsville Police Department and to the City of Brownsville. Done on this, the 16th day of August 2011, and signed by Mayor Antonio Martinez and City Commissioners.
Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Antonio Torres Jr. on the occasion of his retirement from the Brownsville Police Department on May 31st, 2011, after more than 29 years of loyal service. And whereas Antonio Torres Jr. began his career as a police officer with the Brownsville Police Department in 1981. And whereas he was assigned to the Uniformed Services Command for the majority of his career as a motorcycle officer in the Traffic Enforcement Unit. In 2009, he was assigned as a patrol officer in the patrol division. And whereas a dedicated and dependable police officer, Antonio Torres was constantly attentive to the welfare and safety of others and served the citizens of Brownsville with honor and courage. And whereas an exemplary public servant, he earned the admiration and respect of his colleagues and the citizens of his community, and his presence in the Brownsville Police Department would be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of the State of Texas, 82nd Legislature First Call Session, hereby commend Officer Antonio Torres Jr. on his three decades of valuable service to the citizens of Brownsville as a member of the Brownsville Police Department, and extend to him best wishes for the retirement years ahead. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be prepared for him as an expression of high esteem from the Texas Senate. Tony, we too wanted to present you a very special Texas flag that was dedicated especially for you on July the 4th of this year. Congratulations for an outstanding service. And by the way, I, I forgot to give Mr. Avitia one, but I will. I brought you a shopping bag as well.
home watching TV, I was, I used to watch a show called Chips when I grew up. And I said, "One day, I wanna be a motorcycle officer." And I did fulfill that dream. For 25 years, I rode a motorcycle here for the City of Brownsville. And it was a very, very wonderful ride. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas honoring Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. for 29 years of dedicated service. Whereas Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. was born in San Bonito, Texas on October the 9th, 1953, graduated from Harlingen High School in 1972, and began his career with the Brownsville Police Department on February the 18th, 1982. And whereas Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. began his law enforcement career in the Uniformed Patrol Division, continuing with an array of varied assignments, including horseback patrol, field training officer, liaison officer to Mexican law enforcement, auto theft investigator, burglary detail task force, municipal unit, and the Office of Community Affairs. And whereas Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. received many commendations, and his, and this exemplary performance earned him the Brownsville Police Department's Employee Award on numerous occasions. And whereas Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. also served as coordinator for the Brownsville Police Department's Community and Youth Programs, and successfully coordinated all fundraising events relevant to the department's community programs, such as Christmas for the Kids Toy Giveaway, and many other community and youth programs. And whereas Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. honorably retired from the Brownsville Police Department on May the 20th, 2011. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens do hereby honor Officer Remundo Ariano Jr. for his 29 years of service to the Brownsville Police Department and to the City of Brownsville. Done on this, the 16th day of August of 2011, and signed by Mayor Antonio Martinez and City Commissioners.
Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Remundo Ariano Jr. who retired May the 20th, 2011, after nearly three decades of outstanding service with the Brownsville Police Department. Whereas Officer Ariano joined the police department in 1982 and began patrolling on horseback. He went on to serve with many divisions within the department, including the Specials Investigation Unit, the Burglary Detail Task Force, Municipal Court Operations, the Training Division, and the Office of Community Affairs. Whereas dedicated to helping the people of Brownsville, Officer Ariano served as coordinator for the department's Community and Youth Programs. He played an important role in the success of the department's Annual Christmas for Kids Toy Giveaway. And whereas a man of courage and tenacity, Officer Ariano has been dedicated to making the streets of Brownsville safer for its citizens, and he has consistently demonstrated solid judgment in dealing with the unique challenges of law enforcement duty. In honor of his superior service, he received the department's Employee Recognition Award. Whereas an exemplary peace officer, he is respected and admired by his colleagues, and his presence at the Brownsville Police Department would be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of the State of Texas, 82nd Legislature First Call Session, hereby commend Remundo Ariano Jr. on his exceptional service to the people of Brownsville as an officer with the Brownsville Police Department. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be prepared for him as an expression of high esteem from the Texas Senate. Ray, we too want to join with the citizens of my hometown in letting you know how grateful we are. You, as well as the other honorees here today, have been extremely dedicated, and I know it was your passion from the very beginning. I'm one of few here in this room that can say, I saw all three of you start, and you've run it, you've run your, your race well, and you finished with honor, and we thank you for that. Congratulations.
No, I just want to say, thank you so much, and it was an honor. And Chief Carter Garcia was great. Thank you so much.
Ray, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, in departing, I, I want to congratulate you. First time I see you and the new commissioners at work, and I'm, I'm very pleased to call Brownsville my hometown. I'm very pleased and proud of the leadership that you all, all of you are providing to our community, and I, I pledge in behalf of the position that I hold to, to establish the partnerships that we need to be able to address the needs of our community. I was very moved by the presentation made by Mr. Parks. Kenneth and I are good friends. I know that he's been working hard in his, his project. I support it, and I'm gonna do everything I can on my part to, to help him. Also, the presentation made by Dr. Birchfield is one that I'm really happy about. The zoo has come a long ways, but it's taken the City of Brownsville's support and backing to be able to make it succeed. Tourism is very important to us in the state, and as chairman of the new Legislative Caucus in the Legislature for Tourism, I'm gonna pledge to try to do everything I can and continue to fund that particular line item so that we can continue to grow and enjoy the successes we've enjoyed in past years, and hopefully take it to a higher level. Charlie, Mr. Kavler has invited me to come back to give a legislative report, and he didn't have to twist my arm too, too hard, because I think it's important for us to, to share with you what, what happened this last session, and I plan to that, do that in the very near future, whenever y'all can schedule me in. Thank you so much.
Next item, Estella, I think is consent items.
Consent agenda items, A.
Ben Moon, second to the consent items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-012-S to allow a general retail-specific use in a professional office classification for .59 acres of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Gavada subdivision located at 455 Los Ebonos Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor City Commission, in this particular case, the applicant would like to have a, a party place. It's, if we can put the map, please. It's, there is a specific use, as you can see, it is in the corner of Los Ebonos and Russell. This is in the City Commission District Number 3. The Plan Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this application. It is a public hearing.
Entertained a motion?
Want to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, go ahead, Ben.
Would it be approved?
Second.
Have a motion and approval of item number five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-013 to rezone from dwelling G classification to apartment G classification for 0.98 acres for Block 13 of El Harding subdivision located at 3225 Port Isabel Road.
Honorable Mayor City Commission, in this particular case, here shaded in red on Old Port Isabel Road and close to the intersection of Ruben Torres, the applicant would like to have apartments in this location. The Plan Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve supplication. This, this site is located in Commission District Number 3.
Any comments?
It is a public hearing.
Entertained a motion?
Would close?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item number six carries.
Item number seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-014 to rezone from dwelling A classification to general retail classification for 1, 1.1 acre out of Block 47 of Occasion Lake Gardens subdivision located at 235 Mil Paverde Street.
And I would also ask the City Commissioner, please read the other one. They, they go together as the same side, and this is the property shaded in red here. It's on Mil Paverde and, and East Avenue. So if you can read the other one, please, and we'll take care of them at the same time.
Item number eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-014-S to allow apartments classification on a general retail classification for 1 acre out of Block 47 of Occasion Lake Gardens subdivision located at 234 Mil Paverde Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is a specific use, and what you have here is the applicant would like to have in the front part of his property some commercial retail establishments, but in the rear, he wants to have some apartments. This is a public hearing, this is in Commercial District Number One. The planning zoning commission had no problems and had no questions on this, so they voted unanimously to approve this application.
Public hearing. Any comments?
Aye, for one living right down the street, welcome this kind of buildings into the neighborhood, because we're in desperate need of commercial and residential areas where we build a rent, so if there's no comment, I move to close public hearing.
Mayor, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 On both items, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, approval, number seven.
Would it approve?
Second.
On seven and eight?
On seven and eight?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-016-S to allow dwelling-specific use in a dwelling classification for half lot of lots four and five of Block 62 of the West Brownsville addition located at 1653 West Washington Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, the applicant, this is the area shaded in red, it's in Commission District Number Four, and in here, the applicant would like to have a duplex. The planning zoning commission agreed with the applicant, and they had no comments, and voted unanimously to approve this application. They do have a site-specific, it is a specific use, so there is a site plan in your information where they would like to put it up. It's a corner lot, it's a half lot and a full lot, but they do have a site plan of parking where it's going to be located and the facade of the duplex, so there is no, there was no opposition to it at the meeting, and voted unanimously by the planning zoning commission.
Any public comment? Entertained a motion?
Would it close? Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, how about action item, number nine?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number nine. Item number 10?
Number 10, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-017-S to allow specific use classification in an apartment zoning classification for Lot Two and Block Two of Charmaine subdivision located at 6005 Denobio Court.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is for apartments, 12 units off Charmaine Road. The, this is in District Number Two. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application.
It's a public hearing, any concerns? All entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, how about a motion to approve?
Motion to...
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Motion to approve.
Okay, item number 10, motion to approve in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11?
Item 11, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-018-S to allow a general retail classification for a party place and a medium retail classification for 1.4434 acres out of Lot Two of Las Palmas condominiums subdivision located near Las Palmas Circle and Price Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, City Commissioner, this is on District Number Three. In this specific use case, as you can see here on Price and Old Port Isabel Road, Las Palmas condominiums are in the rear, and this is vacant property where the physician would like to establish his practice, and right adjacent to his, to his practice, he wants to have a party place, and that's what's being rezoned today. The medical practice has proper zoning, but the, but the party place does not, so that's what he's applying for. It is specific use, there's a site plan in your packet with the, with the parking location, the exits. The planning zoning commission approved the site plan, and unanimously approved the application. This is a public hearing.
Any comments, public hearing?
I have a question.
Sure, please.
Can you define what a party place is?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not the same thing as a gaming establishment, is it?
No.
Because I haven't seen those on our agenda for a long time.
No, it's not. And, and there was a question earlier today of what is a party place, and what's the difference between a party place and a dance hall, which we have an application right after this. The dance hall has live music, the hours of operation are different. A party place is more like children's piñatas, showers, it's a little bit more tranquil than a dance hall. So that's the only difference.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion to close.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Number 11 is an action item. Do I hear a motion to approve? Number 11?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, that's number 11. Number 12?
Number 12, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-019-S to allow a medium commercial classification for a dance hall on a general retail G classification for Lot One and Two of Block One of Jefferson Plaza, Unit Six, located at 1060 Ruben Torres Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the property shaded in red, it's right off the Expressway and Ruben Torres Boulevard. What this is, is if you recall, it's the building owned by Compass Bank, it used to be Laredo National Bank. So this is a dance hall, and here they want to convert that facility into a dance hall. If, and to put the site plan on the table, they were required by city ordinance to add that parking lot on the, on the top of the page on the north side to accommodate, or to meet the ordinance for parking requirements. The planning zoning commission analyzed the site plan, they agreed with it, so it was unanimously approved, so underutilized building being back into operation, so this is a public hearing.
Okay. This, this is a true dance hall, right?
It's, it's, it's a...
Not a party place, a dance hall.
It's an event center.
Yeah, but this is now in a commercial area, if my recollection is...
Yes, yes.
Okay, any, any other comments?
Just one comment, are you going to be getting permission to sell liquor or beer?
They'll have to apply.
If it's a dance hall.
They'll have to apply.
They would have to apply and meet those requirements. There is the, the Sholom Down right next to it, and I believe they have that, sells that liquor already, so, but they would, that's a different process, and they would have to come here and will go through that process, but right now is...
If he wishes to sell it.
If he wishes to do that.
But if not, it's like any other dance hall where you can bring in your own.
Right, exactly.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Can anybody put a bid on that? If they do have, if they do decide to have an exception set?
It's a private...
It would be a private enterprise, so this does not belong to the city. Anyway, any other comments?
I'm just glad that somebody finally did something with that property.
Yeah, right. Okay, if there's no further comments, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Would it close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Now, action item number 12?
Would it approve?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Number 13, please.
Item 13, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-020-S to allow medium industrial classification for a concrete batch plant on a medium retail classification for 1.5 acres out of 54 acres of Cameron County Records, Volume 808, Page 200, Page 210, located at 1600 FM 511.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is in 511, it's, it's a batch plant that has been located there for, to serve the needs of Highway 550, they mix concrete, sell concrete. They need an additional year to sell their concrete to, to textile for the completion of Highway 550. It's a temporary, it's a movable facility. They, they want to be there an additional year so they can continue to sell their concrete, but it's a special permit for one year only, so the planning zoning commission approved that application.
Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Is there any environmental concern regarding this batch plant? Have you studied anything about it, or do you know anything about it?
The, the batch plant has been there for the last two years. They, they have met all their environmental concerns with, with maintaining the dust control mechanisms that the EPA requires them to have. It's the latest technology regarding the type of equipment that they're using. We did check with the, with the National Park, with the Los Fresnos Independent School District, and they had, they had no comment. We did visit the site with the National Park Superintendent and saw they're in operation, so they did control their dust, so they had the park service had no comment on it.
As well did you visit with residents that live close by?
Well, there's no residents that live close by.
Okay, nobody's complained?
No.
Any further comments? Hear a motion to close public hearing?
Would it close? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Action item number 13?
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, approved. Item number 14?
Item 14, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2011-1200.139 to accepted petition for annexation and the annexation of said property into the city limits and dealing with related matters.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is the first public hearing to bring in that little square of property onto the city. This is, it's actually a lift station that serves the World Birding Center. It's, they, they need power to, to make that operate, and they want PUB power. In order for PUB to service that lift station, they have to be inside the city. So this is the first public hearing, there'll be two public hearings, and, and that's the site right under city limits, so we want to incorporate that piece of property so they can get PUB power, and that's basically what it is.
Any comments on this one?
By annexing that, you're talking about, are there any taxes on that?
That property is owned by the Valley Mud, and I'm not sure. It's a good question. I believe they're tax exempt.
I don't think you're going to get any additional taxes, I think that's, they're exempt, it's a...
They're tax exempt, that's correct. They're tax exempt, but you are going to get revenues where they have to pay PUB for the electricity that they're using.
In other words, we'll, we'll get our, our portion of whatever PUB...
Charges.
Charges, right. Any other comments? Motion to close public hearing?
So, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, action on item number 14. Do I hear a motion?
Approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14 is approved.
Item 15, fill the comment period. Item 16, consideration in action to discuss a possible ad valorem tax rate increase and to authorize two public hearings on August the 30th, 2011, and September 6th, 2011, to discuss the proposed ad valorem tax rate that will exceed the effective tax rate.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor, members of the City Commission, we've gone through several meetings regarding our budget, and to start off with, we started off on our first meeting with a $4.5 million deficit. As we moved on, we went ahead and lowered that. This was presented to you on the 9th, which was last Tuesday. We were showing a deficit of 2.9 million. When we filed the budget with the City Secretary's Office, okay, we're, we need to go back. Okay, when we filed the, we need to go back, please. I wish I had the pointer.
It's the one before that.
I want to show the general fund, please, general fund. Okay, when we filed the, the budget with the City Secretary's Office last Friday, we had lowered the deficit to 2,383,003 tonight. That, no, go back another one.
It's on automatic.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. No wonder. The, the deficit right now, it's 2,283. Okay, we can move forward. Move forward to the next one, please. The, the tax rate, the effective tax rate that has been calculated is 660262. The general fund keeps 59%, and the debt service fund keeps 41%. Tell you what, we'll just go ahead and follow the, the handout. This particular slide shows the increases, how much we would generate with... This particular slide shows the, uh, increases, how much we would generate with a half a penny, a penny, and a penny and a half, et cetera, et cetera, as far as, uh, uh, increase in tax levies. A penny will generate four hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred eleven dollars more. And as we go down the line, we can go all the way down to the rollback rate and the rollback rate is seventy zero six thirteen. That's the maximum that we can increase, uh, without water approval, that's seventy cents zero six thirteen, um, and that would generate two million, uh, nine thousand one twenty-three. The, um, percentage increase by going from a half a penny, a penny, et cetera, et cetera, with half a penny, we are increasing the tax rate by point seven six percent, uh, one point five one for a penny, two point for half a penny, three point zero three for two pennies, three point seven nine to two and a half pennies, four point five four for three, five point three for three and a half, six point zero six for four, and the maximum again for the rollback rate of seventy zero six thirteen, uh, that's the maximum, which is six point one one percent. Uh, this gives you, uh, can you go back? Okay, this one, uh, this, this particular slide shows, uh, how much, right now, the average taxable value of a residence or homestead in Brownsville is eighty thousand five eighty-two. This is a number that, that, uh, was, uh, figured by the Cameron Provo District. Last year, thousand three forty-six, so you can see the average value of a residence grew very small. Uh, it's a small percentage. Um, if we are to, uh, ba- based on the, on the effective rate of sixty-five, sixty-six zero two sixty-two, uh, that would, uh, a citizen would pay five hundred and thirty-two dollars and five cents, or three, three, three dollars and seventy-three cents more than last year. And we, as we move down, if we go to a penny, uh, that means that they'll be paying eight dollars and six cents. If you go to two pennies, sixteen twelve, and then three, twenty-four seventeen, thirty-two twenty-three, thirty-two fifty-two on the four penny, or the, or the rollback rate. We're asking you tonight is to, uh, set two dates, which is, uh, August thirtieth and September sixth, so that we can have public hearings to decu- discuss a possible tax rate increase. And when we're talking about a tax rate increase, we're talking about any percentage, any portion above the effective tax rate. Remember, the effective tax rate is the effective tax rate that was calculated that will generate the same amount of revenues that we generated the prior year. So, tonight, if you're considering this, we would have to publish this in the newspaper, uh, that we will have two public hearings, one on the thirtieth of August and the other one on September sixth.
Okay, and just so that everybody understands, this is to authorize public hearings on two particular dates, this is a tax increase, it just allows the public hearing to, to comment and, and discuss those, correct?
Right. The budget is scheduled for adoption on September twelfth and this particular date, that's when the tax rate is scheduled for approval.
To be set, okay. And, and the two hearing dates will be August the thirtieth and September the sixth.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so, this is an action item, um, do I hear a motion?
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor to set these hearing dates signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Okay, we have item number seventeen, purchases, bids, contracts. Robert?
Item seventeen, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of vehicles for various city departments.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, um, I just gave you, um, a revised analysis. The previous one had some, uh, errors. So the recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of three new two thousand and eleven model Chevy Tahos and three two thousand, uh, two thousand and eleven Chevy Malibus to the Brownsville Police Department, to Calwell County of Calwell, Texas, the low responsible bidder, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's a unit price of twenty-four thousand seven oh three for each Tahoe and a unit price of sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six for the Malibus. The second one is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one new two thousand and eleven model four F one fifty with extended cab, short bed, and a four-wheel drive, uh, to the Brownsville Fire Department, to Tipton Motors of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. The third, uh, award is, uh, purchase and delivery of one new two thousand and eleven Chevy Malibu and two two thousand and eleven Chevy AVOs for the Brownsville Bus Department, to Calwell County of, uh, the low responsible bidder, in the amount of forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. That's, that's, uh, a unit price of thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars each. Then the next one is award a con- to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of three new two thousand and eleven four F two fifty cabin chassis for the Health Department, to Red McCombs of San Antonio, Texas, the low responsible bidder, in the amount of sixty thousand four hundred and ninety-five, uh, equals to twenty thousand one sixty-five apiece. This is the cabin chassis, that's, uh, for the animalbills. The next one is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of three new canals to be mounted on the F two fifties for the Health Department, to Mayron of Warsaw, Indiana, the salt source vendor, in the amount of fifty thousand one eighty-five, or a unit price of sixteen thousand seven thirty-one point sixty-seven. Some of these items, uh, we went out for bids and we also used Buy War and H G A C to, to get the pricing and, um, this, this were the, these are the low betters. So that's a recommendation, funding for this, uh, funding for this purchase or this procurement will be through each department budget line items and it is noted on the next page. The administration of each department concurs with this recommendation and there's a recommendation attached to the, to the agenda.
Is it recorded also that the police vehicles are from forfeiture funds? Could it be, could be put into, into the public record?
Yes, sir.
That they are being paid through forfeiture funds and...
And some grants.
And the others are through grants that are being in light items, so there's...
That is correct.
In reality, the, the taxpayers, general fund money that's being put into this is very limited.
It's, it's, it's little, yes.
Okay, this is an action item, um, do I hear a motion?
Approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen.
Item eighteen, consideration in action to award a term contract for pre-employment physicals and D O T and non-D O T drug testing.
Evaluation Committee recommends the following: to award a term contract for pre-employment physicals, D O T and non-D O T, testing to express occupational Brownsville, Texas as a primary vendor, and Texas alcohol and drug testing services of Houston, Texas, as a secondary vendor, for stipulated prices that are attached to the agenda. This contract shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, and the City of Brownsville, uh, reserves the right and option to extend the life of the contract for an additional three years at the, as stipulated in the contract. Funding for these services is available from each department professional services line item, account number seven six five. The Evaluation Committee concurs with this recommendation.
It's an action item, number eighteen, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, consideration in action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of soil stabilizer for the Brownsville Public Works Department.
Step recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of soil stabilizer to be used by the Brownsville Public Works Department, to Dallas Rodway Products of Addison, Texas, the low responsible bidder, for the stipulated prices on the tab sheet that is attached to your agenda. Uh, the delivery of these products shall be coordinated between the Public Works Department and the recommended firm as a needed, uh, as, as needed basis. The contract shall commence upon approval by City Commission and shall expire, shall expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, with the option to extend for two additional years if it's mutually accepted, accepted by the supplier in the City of Brownsville. Funding, funding for this contract will be available through general fund account zero one four seventeen dash seven forty-three and the COO fund account eighty-two dash four seventeen dash seven forty-three. This is a recommendation from the Public Works Department.
Okay, that's an action item number nineteen, do I hear a motion?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your turn, Commissioner.
Would you adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is adjourned.